Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Monday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, it's five thirty. Time for our workshop session. We will call it to order. And first item of the month on the discussion and presentation is a lay-in pass to Central President, Paul Miller, for twenty twenty-five.
Mayor and Council, the city group was in receipt of an amended budget from the other municipal district day within the week twenty-eight. This is the first time since they've had opportunity to discuss that. They are allowed to modify their budget throughout the year without requiring approval from the taxing entities. They are dipping into their fund balance, unused funds from previous years, to accommodate these modifications. This isn't here for a vote for approval, they don't need that from the taxing entity. However, I think it's important to bring to your attention that there are some implications in future year budgets with some of the adjustments that they are proposing to make. Most specifically, the salary and benefit items will obviously carry forward from this year to next. I'm not sure if the other items identified in their budget amendment are reoccurring expenses or one-time expenditures. I don't have that clarification for you. And again, this is not in front of you to approve or deny. It's a notification that they are amending their budget and to make you guys aware that there will be budgetary implications with that next year. I don't really have anything further on that unless you guys have some questions that I can take back to them. They are moving next Thursday, the twenty-seventh at five thirty.
I would like to know why they're changing so much through the salaries? Because like, for example, if the chief appraiser was making eighty-four and they're saying they want to change it to make one-twenty-five, so that's a forty thousand dollar increase for the chief appraiser. But yet, the other adjustments are making the different salaries. Like, one goes up fifteen, one goes up six, one goes down six, one goes down eight thousand, one goes down fifteen thousand, one goes up two thousand. So I just don't understand their rhyme or reason or rationale, especially for the chief appraiser to get a forty thousand dollar raise.
Which might need a speed.
On the appraiser, on the, yeah.
So a lot of these, like Aaron said, will meet next Thursday. The chief appraiser position, you didn't know we have replaced the new chief appraiser with a new one? And the salary, there, I mean, there's obviously a huge salary difference to get somebody that's actually qualified up here to do the job. Just one of the deals that we get. As far as the rest of, there's some, some, a lot of the other... A lot of the other adjustments that are made are just because we're trying to get in the right people with the right trainings and everything else. It's something that we're looking at. We're trying to manage that budget within expectation for all the taxing entities. We'll obviously go into it a lot more. Some of the big costs that we have were some of the contracting and stuff that we've had to do in the meantime, trying to fill in gaps from employment. So hopefully, we'll have a lot better answers for you the next round. But the main deal, like your big jump for your chief appraiser, is just bringing in the new chief appraiser that we get that's actually qualified to do the job.
I saw they're losing a position. One of their appraisers, they're losing, I guess, to help offset that. I know you can't answer part of it, but I mean, is this like something we're gonna do in the next year? We're gonna add it back?
No, so we've done a mixture too of some contract work, where we have some contracted pressure, kind of like the maps and deeds. We lost that position originally while actually Susan left. Well, we've learned, like, for that, we're subsidizing that with a contract that's actually half the price of the salary and benefits.
They want to leave that one, they want to leave that appraiser.
I know, I know, I repeat that.
Okay, okay.
So a lot of this is a learning curve with, like I said, experienced chief appraisers that's given us, you know, a whole lot better corrections.
So the, because the one appraiser, like, y'all had a appraiser appraiser, but then y'all go into an appraiser RPA two and a RPA one. And there was a big, like, a big down drop, like, the fifteen thousand dollar down for the RPA one. But yet, the RPA two went up two thousand or something. I was playing with the numbers earlier.
I'm not a hundred percent, Kathy.
Those are just, I mean, because I didn't know what the different, I mean, are the... What is the RPA two and RPA one, are they for?
So that's gonna be the training and the specifications, the certifications that they need.
That they have to have?
That they have to have, so obviously eleven-one, level two, so on.
And they haven't had those yet?
I believe, well, I think they, some of the girls have been training on it. They just haven't followed through and got it until now. And so obviously, when they get it, there is a pay bump, kind of like a certification thing.
Okay, thanks.
Easy.
Do we know that, uh?
We do not.
Financial ramifications for the future budgets. Aaron, you said something about we know there's going to be ramifications. I'm assuming that's monetary, right?
Right, so hopefully, and Juan knows that we hiked out of this budget early on last year for twenty twenty-five. Like I said, a lot of this has been contractual work that we may or may not need in the future. A lot of it, I think, we'll really hammer out next Thursday. I believe that meeting's at five or five-thirty next Thursday. So hopefully, we can get through that and figure it out and not make, you know, some of these big-ticket items won't be a repeat for following here.
Discussion regarding any items on the regular agenda. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn workshop session?
So moved.
Oh, in favor? Paul, board.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you this evening. We thank you for such a great place to be. We appreciate you being on follow us. We ask that you be with us with these items that we need to discuss, be with those presenting, those considering, be with us to make the good decisions to help all of your people, which is your will. Or we ask that you be with those in our great state tonight, those that are fighting fires and those that are praying for rain. We ask that you watch over some safety till we can meet again. And as always, in Jesus's name, amen.
Joy and blessings. Opened with allegiance to the Father and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor and justice for all, and glad allegiance to the King of kings, one safe, under God, one indivisible.
Citizens' comment, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. The city council may not deliberate on items presented under this agenda either. And we do not have any. One point two, citizens' comment, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter that is included on the agenda may do so at this time.
I don't have anybody on the sign sheet, but we will have some public comment on a few of the items under the public hearing.
One point three, public hearing to receive citizens' comment regarding a rezon request for Northern Creek Estates, commonly known as twelve oh-six Mill Street and seventeen oh-five East Fourth Street as follows. Forty-nine single-family residential, six SF six lots, lots to a hundred and eighteen lots. A hundred and nineteen single-family residential, eight SF eight lots, sixty-five. Seventy-five single-family residential lots, ten SF ten lots to sixteen lots. Thirty single-family attached townhome lots to sixty-eight lots.
Okay, Lady Mayor and Council. As Mayor Pierce stated, that is the request for the proposal for this evening. And if you go back and you can kind of look on your page, I'm gonna have it pulled up for you. This kind of gives you a better picture of what they're trying to implement as the change to what's currently existing on the ground today. And this kind of shows you the change in their makeup of how they're doing their single-family, their townhomes, and their commercial. So, I'm just gonna flip this. It won't? Okay. So you're gonna, you're leaking out it sideways, and I apologize for that. But the ag at the top is gonna be the twenty acres that's new in comparison to what's existing. And then, right now, with the pink area towards the top where the ag is currently defined, it looks like a little cul-de-sac. That was recommended by the planning commission to change from the townhomes to single-family. So you would have all single-family going up to where it meets up with the ag.
On both, both of those sets of paint?
Just, just on the, just on the cul-de-sac part.
Just on the blue one?
Yes. It's about twenty lots that are currently designated as single fam, I'm sorry, as townhomes. And they recommend to change it to the single-family S of six. So that will replace approximately twenty townhomes with single-family. That would decrease the townhome lots overall from sixty-eight to approximately forty-eight and increase the single-family from one eighteen to approximately a hundred and thirty-eight lots overall for the division.
One eighteen what?
One eighteen to one thirty-eight.
What's the townhome difference?
Seven.
The townhome, the difference, you know, that figure the numbers, you've missed it.
The numbers?
Yeah. What they changed it to?
I can, I'll give you a copy of this, okay, just give me one second. On page fourteen and fifteen of your packet, you'll also see the letter from trailer engineering regarding this proposed development and what has transpired as far as their traffic impact analysis that was transpired before, any indication they did to the schools, and any engineering that they've done preliminary. And then what's gonna be coming to the future? Because again, tonight is just about zoning. They still have to go through their civil review. They still have to verify the text after the traffic impact analysis that they did previously that is still in place, et cetera. So this is just the first step.
So the, you have the letter on the red, that's coming in on Fourth Street, correct?
At the very bottom, that little pink looking, the commercial, yes.
That's coming in Fourth Street. And then the only other exit is, is why the, um...
Brown Street, yes.
Kathy, if you were to, at least at Seftco, you know, when you pull into the Giso Island off of Fourth, and then where you pull into the Good Bean Store? But halfway between, if you were to live here, that's where that property level payments are, right?
So where are those little houses? Are those houses that are already there next to it where it says commercial? Those houses on Fourth?
Yeah, the white house, the white house.
There's, there are, there are buildings there, right?
I thought there was a house?
There's a white house.
I thought there were a couple houses there.
There's, and then the townhouses would be off to the left, I was... It splits, they're, 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 the, um...
That commercial entrance, aren't there houses, like, where it says commercial? See what says commercial in red on there? Aren't there houses currently right there?
There is something there, yes ma'am. I can't tell you whether it's a house or a building or a...
There's one house, one workshop, five or six.
A house and a workshop.
Yes, on the left is Mr. and Mrs. Matthews, and on the right, I don't know who owns that, because white house on the right, stuff that's split, those two houses.
So we would essentially not be having commercial stuff next to home?
The commercial stuff was already zoned.
It's the zone commercial, so the houses are in the zone commercial area.
A lot of Fourth Street is that way.
What's, what's your intent with the ag property and what? Is that responsibility of the city, or are we gonna put cows on it in order to get ag exemption? Or how, how is that?
Well, it's ag because it's green space. That is part of their plan for their drainage that we'll review at a later time for their civil. But that's part of the retention, detention part that they are having to compensate for to make sure how it flows to the creek. And they can discuss that and go into more detail with you from an engineer perspective. But that's gonna be part of the civil review, not part of the zoning. But that's gonna be just green space back there. It's not gonna have any development whatsoever on it.
So...
It's not actually ag, it's green space.
But the, so the Richardson property that the water all drains into, is that, that touch the blue that says right here? So how is the, how is the green ag drainage cost of gonna help the drainage to go through the Richardson property and keeping all this water from getting flooded?
It's gonna be based on their design of how they have it flow. Though, they can discuss that with you this evening, however, that'll come with the civil part. We'll have to go through the drainage trucks with them to verify it's gonna work the way that they intend it to work based on their design. We haven't seen their design today.
So if we haven't seen the design, why are we doing the zone?
We're doing zoning only, and that's the first step with anything. This is just the beginning, the preliminary rezoning property to, for them to be able to move on with the design stage.
But we've already rezoned it where it could be, if they're, they're wanting different zoning, it won't be green too.
Yes ma'am, that is correct. That is correct.
Without looking at anything new?
So in May, in May of twenty twenty-three, we did approve some zoning, and that is what it looks like today, a single-family, eight, ten, and twelve, with some commercials, townhomes, just like it is today except minus the ag, basically, or the green space.
But we're losing, they're losing twenty and a half acres to the ag.
To the green space.
And they're only reducing the house number by sixteen. So they're putting even more rooftops in the hole. When we did it twenty twenty-three, part of it was, we wanted less rooftops. But now we're taking away twenty acres and we're only, and they're only reducing, and they're like increasing the number.
The number, the number of lots for dwellings will be very similar to what it was before.
But not really, but they're losing, the twenty acres, twenty acres is a big, a big piece. And so the difference, because originally, it was two hundred and eighty-three lots, and now, for, for rooftops. Now, even with flip-flopping, with thirty-eight and forty-eight, it's two hundred and sixty-seven rooftops, which is only a difference of sixteen rooftops, and you've lost twenty acres. So if the reason that we zoned it the first time is because we didn't want it to be rooftop due to the drainage, I don't understand, I just don't see how this is making sense.
Well, well, just keep in mind that whether it passes zoning or not, however the direction we go, they still have to prove that the drainage is gonna work as designed. We're not to that stage yet. We haven't looked at any civil set, any drainage plans, anything at this juncture. This is strictly what they feel that they can do and they can accomplish.
But part of what we did in twenty twenty-three was to less rooftops because we didn't want the teeny-tiny, hippie-bitty lots of different rooftops.
Yes ma'am.
And that's what we're going back to. That's what they're asking to go back to, what we already said there to the first time.
Curious, do you know if they actually plan on developing this themselves? Or are they trying to rezone so that it'd be an easier offload?
From, I don't know, I can't speak to the developers, but based on the conversations we've had...
But here, can we figure that out?
The engineers.
I think it's probably better for them to speak to it than staff.
Yes, I agree completely. I just want to finish my staff report. So I would kind of do. Do you want to come and speak to it now?
Good evening, how are y'all? I'm Jimmy Torres, I'm one of the developers, one partner in the track group, and so I want to answer some of your questions. Starting with, you said, do we plan on developing it? Yes, we plan on developing it ourselves, yes sir.
You're not just doing this to try to offload it?
No, sir. We're, we're planning on developing it and putting in the subdivision.
I'm just curious, because it's been for sale for a little while?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We put it on the market with the acreage, because the drainage didn't work out. And when the Richisons wouldn't allow us to put any additional water in their property, it made it difficult, absolutely. And so we had to go back to drawing board. And that's what the, the ag space is for right now, to drain the water that way, towards the creek, yes sir.
So this ag space is, the elevation is higher, quite a bit higher than where these lots are being built?
Currently, yes sir.
Have you, are you planning on building this up so much to where it's above the ag space? So it'll...
We plan on taking dirt out of the ag space and pulling it forward.
How many feet do you think they're gonna build up to?
Without, you're asking me about a house up for plans. I can't say that yet. I gotta get the zone before I can get in all that. I really don't know, isn't an honest answer, until we start the construction plans. And I can't do that until I get the zoning approval.
Because it costs a lot of money if you get so civil. I'm not trying to be on one side or the other here, but... You, you mind if I say something?
No, no, turn, please.
Just, just one thing from the contractor's point of view. And of course, I know everybody here that's, you know, affected by this. But the P and Z part of it, I don't know anyone that's gonna go spend five hundred thousand dollars on a set of civil plans on a roll of the dice, whether the P and Z or the city council's gonna approve a zoning request. It doesn't mean the subdivision's a hundred percent going through and everything's going. But if you don't have the P and Z, you don't know what to conform to. You don't have the zoning. I went through this in Williamson County. I've been working on it a year and a half down there. I had a customer want to build some, a commercial residential in a residential lot. We had to go to the city for zoning. Once we got the zoning changed, then we're able to come in there with architects and engineers to get everything in there. And we spent about a half million dollars so far on doing that. I don't know anyone, anywhere, be it here or anywhere else in the state, that's gonna spend all this money to have these questions. And I don't know them from Adam. I mean, Mr. Kemp, I've known you forever. I'm not trying to stick up for them. But I think there's a lot of misdeluded information that's going around that this is a simple zoning request. They, they can put whatever they want to on paper, doesn't mean the city's gonna approve it and go on with it. State, there's so much more state law, TCEQ, that's gonna require them to do more than even the city ordinance is willing. And I, I, I don't know. Like I said, I'm not trying to piss any of y'all off either. I say, I just see the loss of the, the communication end of this, that this is simply a zoning request. If you, if you want these houses there or not, that's, it's real simple. Because if they can't, or whoever buys it, or flips it, or sells it, or does whatever, they can't spend that kind of money if it's a crap shoot on whether this council is gonna even approve it. And that's my two cents, Mr.?
So that's how I was getting at it. I can't go spend a half million bucks or not more. I remember it is, hoping that you guys will approve what I put in the comments. If I did that, this would be the fourth of the time, and it would be pretty expensive at that point, yeah.
Yeah, I completely understand that, and that's not what I was getting at. I mean, just by, just by visiting the site and person, you can tell, I mean, there's thousands of loads of materialists that have been brought in there. So to bring that up, I was just curious on how you plan on doing that or if you had any idea of how much that would be?
Yeah, until I get there, I just don't know. And, and one reason why we want another plan, we draw it up then, because by doing an additional back part where the ag is coming out, in the back, it remained on the river. That's, that's honest answer, to, to just get that section buildable. And that just makes sense, but no one can worry about it a lot. And normally, we should really want it because it's all river, they're good. And if, if you get a river, I wouldn't want that on my, as my personal property. So that's why we do it with that, and then not being able to take the water to the Richardson property or having to send it this way to the ag, fortunately.
Which is against, like, the natural flow, which makes it difficult.
Yes ma'am.
It's expensive. Which I understand why you would want more houses, but that's not necessarily what the city...
Well, what the council actually asked for, and P and Z, was a mixed-use development, which is what we're getting. It's actually also what the comprehensive plan said. I went back and reviewed that, and it said, if you read it, and it's very clear, on page one hundred, it says they want small lots. This is, this is our basement, the nine people that has, right? I think eight hundred people were responding. It said they want small lots, less responsibility, that was on page forty-nine. They said they want more duplexes, more fourplexes, more townhomes. I'm not putting duplexes, fourplexes on there. I'm putting townhomes, so each individual lot will be owned by us. So that's some miscommunication as well, I felt like. I heard a bunch of rentals, it's not our intent to make any properties rentals. I'm developing it, I'm gonna sell these, they will have individual addresses, and they will be on our products. You know, right now, lay-in pass is missing, what's called the, uh, the no-act. Missing the, there's a lot, high-end lot, a lot of it's up, and, and that's what the number is. I don't know, I'm reading off of what the comprehensive plan said. But it repeats over and over and over, they want small lots, and they want mixed use. Well, I feel like this is the most mixed use we could possibly be. And still make it a subdivision that it would afford by lots and by homes. Because if I go back to the original plan I've been talking about, I mean, you guys wouldn't want to buy a ten thousand square foot lot that costs you two hundred thousand dollars. It wouldn't make sense financially for anyone.
Why this area? I'm sorry? Why this area? Why? Because it is so low, and then at the end, it's so high. And that's gotta be cut down, and this has gotta be built up. It's at least eight feet to the center, where the yellow, the light blue, and the kind of the pink weed, that's the area that I would be concerned if I'm an developer or potential buyer. But I was standing at Seftco, and I'm across Fourth Street, and stood right on the edge of Fourth Street. It's at least eight feet from there, lower down to the middle of that area. And I think you just said a million dollars in dirtwork minimum?
Just on the other design.
Okay.
Not this, so I don't have, I'm just on this one guy's surface, because I don't know what I'm painting.
Sure, and, and, and a lot of people made great comments here, Mr. Harrison, Truskinie, Mr. Hernandez, and everybody's made great comments. Why this area with it's so... It's got the full town kind of work, you have the council work, that P and Z's been three or four times, you've had it approved, now it's not approved. Give me the why, please.
My fault, I didn't open it, that's why.
But you had, you hadn't have known, sir, this, I know this is in your first arraignment.
Correct, yes sir.
So standing there at Seftco, looking out, saying, man, that's a great piece of property, but it's so...
Yeah, sure, so why the... To, to be fair, I didn't want the Fourth Street part of this property. If you guys know anything about this property, I was hand-tuffed, right? So the same, kind of almost a straight line, kind of up there, it goes up to the Kent property, kind of makes an L shape, I don't know, some of you guys can't see that, but... We sit at the ten, all the way moving forward to Fourth Street. I didn't really buy it, at least, and develop, but because we couldn't use water to the property without going, I mean, it was crazy, around a couple six blocks and back. It was actually cheaper for me to buy this piece of property than to extend the water line, which was two million dollars. But we're hand-tuffed because the city couldn't afford to upgrade the water lines for the, for the folks. Which would make it a lot easier to develop, actually. So, yeah, so, most of this...
Just here, the light one?
Yes, sir, most of this was a different purchase. Because again, we thought we had water coming in on, on Mill Street, what, close to that one? And, and actually, there wasn't, and, and to, to make it better for city lay-in passes, to upgrade on Fourth and around, because she was supposed to buy the property and do it that way. Now, it does cause a little more issues with the drainage, because now I can't, you know, do some things that I wanted to do, it's a lot easier, but it's gonna work out the end of it.
What was your plan before the light blew in your mind? What was the plan to deal with this low area and...
That's, that's five years ago, I don't remember that plan. I, I've been through...
We can say a change of, just a, just a concept, though.
I've slept since then, honestly. I mean, I'm not being jerk, sir. I really don't remember what we were, what our plans was on that. It doesn't, I mean, I'm completely in the lab, it's hard, yeah, for sure, I just don't know what that was.
And then, kind of, this is taken from the green land, the ag can knock that down, lower it, and build up the center part?
Yes, sir, bring it back to Fourth Street, yes, sir, that's correct.
Curious, I want to address something similar. You said the city couldn't afford to upgrade the water lines over there?
That's correct, no, the city wanted us to upgrade the water lines.
And the headquarters couldn't afford, second.
Well, that's, that's, well, shoot, that's for second. I mean, would you agree, we had that conversation in the cities, that they couldn't afford to upgrade the water lines? They, we weren't even sure if you helped with it, that's right.
Did you ask, did that come to council, any kind of request like that?
Uh, no, sir, sure didn't. I, I didn't, didn't do that kind of... Uh, no, sir, sure didn't, I, I didn't, didn't do that kind of.
And, so how did we even discuss upgrading the lines, and didn't come to council? And?
Mr. Morris, that's, that's not for me to know, I, I went and bought the property because I did know there was water there.
It's just something here, the city couldn't afford to do that, 'cause I'm thinking, well, why isn't the progress of the city do it?
Well, we benefited a lot of homeowners on those, uh, blocks, those additional blocks. And, and.
They're just delivery there, not so.
Yeah, no, I'm not being a jerk, right, I'm not saying, the city might ask kind of, or I'm saying, it didn't make sense financially for the water line that needs to get broken.
Okay, that makes more sense, the city couldn't afford.
But it wasn't just the city of this property, I'm pretty clear about that. Hey, I, I actually have something, I, I know the last time when we were here is for growth, and you had some very tough questions. That I think need to be addressed, you know, why is this good for my passes, and then those were great questions, sir. Um, we were prepared to answer that, and that's, that's not a lie. Uh, but I think it's very clear that this is good for my passes, because the city, uh, people in passes are asking for it, you go back in the comprehensive plan. But also additionally, as I said, almost twenty percent of people living in passes are in construction, someone should have one. So, it should be an opportunity for more jobs, opposite the tax base is gonna go up a lot a bit. Because you have two hundred four year home, or a number in the B, to, to, to get taxes on. I, uh, I feel like there's a lot of reasons why this is good for my passes. And infrastructure, we're bringing that as well.
Just curious, Victor, we've talked about this, what, five, six times with the council? How many times has somebody been a favorer, we've heard, you know, does anybody know? I can't recall.
Well, I will say, this is the first time that we had actually been approved by P and Z to afford a council.
I think there was some questions out there, why we got kicked back last time floating around. And I think that was the direction of the council, was that we wanted something to fit in the front of P and Z, because I don't think it sets a very good precedent if. We're voting on stuff, or the little board is not actually able to recommend it.
I know that there's questions floating out there, sure, the past week or so.
Absolutely.
I think there's a lot of issues out there. Yes, sir, I'll get something.
Any other questions?
I guess, uh, this might be too early, because again, this is just a zoning request. Even this is reasonable, it is done right now, we can go build on it, right?
Yes, sir.
But this is just a pre-zoning request, even getting it pre-zoned does not mean that. This is gonna be financial viable for y'all, or the subdivisions coming in, there's a lot of lots that check that.
Yes, sir.
I think there's a worship, misunderstanding of folks out there.
Yes, sir, worship borrowers, I'm gonna come back, because we did have referrals, my, yes, sir, you're correct.
And then, is it too early to address, you're coming on Fourth Street, traffic issues right there, is it too early to address that?
Yeah, I gotta do the traffic study, um, at the face-up traffic study, yes, sir, I can't get some questions until I get some things on and changed. But we, that actually did have a, that traffic study done, and it was, and it was fine. According to the pass up. But I would need to do it in a while.
It seems to me that you're permitted, you obviously get the zoning approved, and, and spend a whole bunch of money on the poll with no. With no agreement from this council to approve your next steps. Uh, because of so many water runoff issues, traffic issues, it would seem to, to me, that, I, I know that's not that step right now, you're looking at something. I completely understand. But there are so many questions from this council, from the citizens, that it would seem to me that you would have all those answers ready right now. Before you go spend half a million, a million, three million, I don't know that hurt, uh, and, and for this council in the future's sake, no, not with that.
Yeah, I need to buy it until I am approved for a resuming, a resuming. I know that previously, the development worked, the traffic study was good, the water was good, the sewer capacity was good. Everything was fine, it just didn't work, I had to for us, and I did not want to put lots in the backside of that group that were eight, nine, ten feet older.
And then what have you been told about sewer capacity right now?
Uh, right now, not, until, I'll say before, I did our plan to, to upgrade that little section.
Because I think what I'd be, on the right, I'd be saying that's a concern of the council, who is sewer capacity.
Actually, it's okay if I turn sort of, to meet anybody with a turn, any other questions?
B J, I'm a voluntary associate, so engineering, starting, um, I don't know if it was the council meeting, or the P and Z, we, we had enough of these, that, uh. Jonesy, Roy, are civil engineers, that y'all contract with, to review these plans, he's come. On one of those meetings, and confirmed, he has reviewed, and there is water in sewer capacity.
How recent was that?
End of last year?
I did, I did, I did rely on our guy, Mr. Simmons in the back.
No, absolutely, whoever y'all have, I just, Jonesy, where is it, y'all?
Right, right, yeah, there's been some developments over the past year in my perspective.
All right.
Can you say to that, please?
That is very true, so, capacity in West River Plant has changed over the last year and a half, two years, there are questions. Uh, the city is working on those questions, but you're also talking about max buildout. Which will happen for, you know, seven, eight, nine, ten years, whatever it is, over their financial plan is, you know, because. They can't go build two hundred homes tomorrow, but it's gonna take them several years to build that out. Which hopefully, we'll have everything decided and figured out at West River Plant, I mean.
Well, then, same thing too, approving the zoning doesn't require you to give a sewer, coming back to the final plaque. With the focal construction plan, showing the water sewer drainage design, is when you then confirm that you have the sewer capacity at that point. So, but yes, we've confirmed this in the past, we were not told it's ever been changed, but again. Final planning is when y'all would be confirming, so, and if we find out that there's not sewer capacity, then we can put a hole in. So, that's been addressed.
And that's what I do, I wanna reiterate, this is just for zoning, whether or not each one of those individuals, I think it's a good idea to build a subdivision at floodplain or not. This is just about zoning.
Yeah, we're gonna come back through this whole process again, P and Z's gonna review the final plaque, y'all are gonna review the final plaque, and even then, and I told this P and Z. The amount of review that happened on that final plaque. Um, I mean, we had to submit a full set of construction plans, I have to comply with P C E Q, comply with all of the city's regulations. Uh, my engineers are licensed with the state, so everything they do, you know, their license is on the line to make sure that, you know, that it follows all of the state codes. So, Jonesy, where is gonna review it, your shaft's gonna review it, everyone here's gonna review this plan, and we're gonna go through that whole process, P and Z again, and council. It's gonna be a public meeting, everyone will get an opportunity to see that, so, you have to say zoning approval at this point. Doesn't allow us to outside building here, it's just a plan change, that they need those ability to move forward to begin to look at those things and address those.
And procedurally, that would go through, you know, like, the city's building official as well.
Absolutely.
They would have to sign off.
Absolutely, the street department, the fire department, everyone reviews those plans.
That was my question, is why would they, Mr. Torres, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, why wouldn't you continue with all of those questionable processes going forward, that you could be four, five million dollar tenant, you get the axe? Why couldn't we address and, and get all that turned up now?
Because this is just a zoning.
And I can't, I can't.
Completely understand, completely understand, sir, but.
Again, I can't develop, I can't do plans, I can't draw plans into all the engineering sites that you're asking for, until this is approved.
Did you get a survey for this property?
Absolutely.
So, what's the survey, say from the, from Fourth Street to the center, what's the drop?
Sir, this is only, I don't know.
But you have to survey, right?
Yeah, I do.
We did the survey, we're also gonna be doing engineering, so. We, we do have some of that data, have we reviewed it, so I hate to speak to these things, because when I tell you that. The water's gonna be handled this way, or whatever maybe your traffic is gonna be this. Then we go through that whole design process, and I come back and changes, I want anyone to look again and say, but you told me this is how it was gonna happen. So, because we've not spent that time, we, we really are hesitant to commit to the natural. The, the grading on here, yes, that low spot is low, but it's not as low as you expected. The top of that hill up there on Fourth Street is significantly higher, and then it drops off down into the bottom. The lowest spot on that property, there, there is a low spot that is in the middle, but then there's a small hill in the ag, and then it drops back off as it heads over to the creek. Yeah, right in that area right there, so, we have, we, we've done very well and very great, and again, I hate to even talk about it, because it's not final. But we can grade this property to the back, it's gonna require five, six foot fill in certain areas, some spots it's gonna require two, three foot fill. We're gonna have to remove dirt out of that ag area to place up there, and when we remove that, that's gonna create a detention pond, it would be a regional detention pond for this whole property. The, the property on the, I think it's the east, um, we were draining water onto them before, and legally by law, we're allowed to do that. And in certain instances, you have to continue to do that, because when you have farmers that have salt tanks that are filled with runoff water from their property, if we cut that off completely. Now, we're also in trouble because we cut off their water. But because of the concerns of the neighbor there, we're gonna cut that water off completely, and we're gonna take all this water to the back, so we're not gonna be discharging water on any of the neighbors. No street discharge right now, pipe dumping, no channels, so all of that water's gonna go to the back part of that ag property. We have done enough grading to know that we can do that, know how much fill for sure, you know, what that quantity number is, we don't know. And then the text up, yes, we had, we spent money to get a traffic analysis done. They did come back and say there would need to be street entrances, exactly what those are, you don't know, it would run the likelihood of being a right turn lane. Uh, turning into that property, so you'll have car turn in to get out on, to, to get out of the travel land on Fourth Street, so they'll turn into their own dedicated land, and will have to pay with this project, which will they get the cars in.
Mayor, mayor, this time I wanna begin to hear from the public, since it's a public hearing. Anybody here from the public who'd like to address this, just came to come forward?
I've had public hearing, babe, so if I say something that, you know, they refused before, I'm sorry. Anyway, good evening, Mr. Mayor, we're getting the city council, I'm under the effects of camera. And my husband Dale and I consistently oppose the Northeast and Creek estate proposal. Raising serious concerns about overcrowding, traffic congestion, flooding issues, and the strain on our assets already overburdened infrastructure. These concerns remain just as urgent today. Since January two thousand twenty-three, this proposal has come before the final zoning committee at least six times, and the city council twice. At every stage, committee members raised critical questions, yet the responses from engineers have been vague at test, failing to provide real explanations and solutions. Meanwhile, developers continue to push their agenda, um, instead of addressing community concerns in, in transparency. On March sixth, we received yet another notification of a P and Z and city council meeting regarding this proposal. Along with a letter from Turley Engineering that was supposed to provide additional information regarding the project. Instead, it was more of the same. I'd like to address some of the major concerns we've discussed in the letter from Turley Engineering. The traffic congestion and traffic safety was the first issue in their letter. The engineers claim they consulted, um, P I A traffic engineers, who concluded. That all that's needed at the intersection of Fourth and the housing development's main entrance. Is a left turn lane and a right turn deceleration lane with no traffic signal required. Yet Tech Dot has not confirmed this, we have seen nothing in writing, and there is no indication that they have studied the proposal. When we contacted Tech Dot, they had no record of any requests for a traffic study. Even if these additional lanes were approved, where's the land coming from? There's no room for a six lane road on Fourth Street without taking land from existing property owners. Is that fair to the property owners? Then they discussed the drainage problems. This property sits in a floodplain, as we all know, at a low elevation, replacing natural vegetation with impervious services, surfaces. Will significantly worsen the drainage issues, leading to an increased runoff and unethical flooding. The engineers now plan they will pond all the water at the back of the property and reduce flow from three hundred C F S to fifty C F S. Before discharge into sulfur creek. Um, but where exactly looks massive drainage problem located, I guess they did kind of answer what, what they're planning on doing, I didn't see that in the plaque. Um, and how will they, and how do they plan to redirect the water safely into the sulfur creek? When it's a, so, surrounding property owners expressed their concerns about flooding onto their property. The developer assured us that they would elevate the slab and not cause increased water.
Time's, time's up, man.
Excuse me?
Time, time's up, you have three minutes.
Two minutes.
Yeah, two, two minutes on this public hearing.
Oh, really?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm David Matthews, I live in seventeen oh, oh three East Fourth Street. I do have concerns, I understand this is strictly a zoning. And I know that we can't expect them to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to do, uh, complete surveys. But I think we should be able to get a, a, a much better idea of what it would cost them before they have to go through. Uh, I really wanna express concerns over the drainage, the density, uh, possible H O A fees, and the traffic. Uh, these are crucial issues, and we still haven't got detailed information, which again, this is just a zoning, not a final plaque. But, uh. It, I still think it should be unacceptable to the city and the residents. Based on what we can already see, and not force them to go through, uh, possibly hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars worth of studies. When it just, I don't see how it could work. City council should be advocate for the resident, current residents and future residents. And. Be able to see that the flooding can be a hazard, and traffic issues can be a hazard. Uh, I wanted to try through ventures, they have three people listed, members, directors, and contacts. That is Emilio Perez, Gerald Freeman, and Jimmy Torres is here tonight. Uh, these are direct, uh, directors, members, governing persons. Let's see, Mr. Peralmas has twenty-eight LLCs. Uh, Mr. Freeman has four LLCs. And Mr. Torres has twenty-four LLCs, all associated with his name. Can we get the?
I'm set.
Overhead, pardon?
I'm set.
Um, to finish what, uh, they just came up with saying. Um, the developers stated that their housing development, and I quote, "It's right into what the community wants." Unfortunately, the community is not aware of all the problems this development will create. A proposed housing plant located in a flood-prone basin while cramming two hundred sixty-seven housing units. And two commercial lots into just fifty acres is a reckless move that will have devastating consequences for our community. The people of Lampasses deserve transparency and responsible development. The city must publicly disclose the details of this proposed development, including infrastructure challenges, funding sources, and comprehensive economic impact study. Disclosing the details in the Lampasses ditch pass, dispatch record newspaper and online platforms. Moving forward without addressing the long-term consequences for our community environment and infrastructure would be a serious disservice to the people of Lampasses. The city of Lampasses has the responsibility to ensure sensible, sustainable growth that enhances the quality of life for current and future residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you for your comments. We'll move on to one, one point four, public hearing to receive citizen comment regarding requests for zoning property from retail. To two family residential district duplex. request rezoned property from retail to two-family residential district duplex for property described as lots one A, two A, block eighteen, Old Town Edition, located at the corner of East First Street and Live Oak in Lampassus, Texas, Lampassus County.
Mayor and Council, this item was heard before the planning commission on March sixth. They did recommend approval. Mr. Hardman is the owner, and Eric Dewall has currently purchased it, and he's gonna be relamping it, and he has asked for those two lots to go from retail to duplex. We did sign our notices to property owners within, we did thirty-three notices, we received one in favor and none in opposition at this time. This is in line with the comprehensive plan. With regarding the need in that area, it is something that's more of a corridor downtown transitional area, so it does fit within that neighborhood as well. Do you have any questions? Mr. Hardman and Jimmy Walter both here in attendance.
Any questions? One point five, public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding a request for specific use permits to allow for accessory dwelling in an area zone, single-family residential ten, SF ten, described as lot seven A, replant of lots seven and eight, block three, FJ Harris subdivision, commonly known as nine oh seven West Sixth Street, Lampassus, Texas, Lampassus County.
Ms. Valentine has asked for this special use permit to allow for a accessory dwelling that are known as a guest house, for her to be used as personal use for her family. Um, the area is a single-family residential. We did sign out twenty-one notices to property owners, and at the time of preparing the report, we've never received any favor or in opposition. It does work within the comprehensive plan with regarding to lifecycle housing, which is kind of what this is intended for. If you have any question, Ms. Valentine is here as well in the audience.
Questions? One point six, public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding a request to abandon the sixteen-foot wide alleyway north of Avenue E between the easternly and the westernly section of Lot eighty, commonly known as seven oh three West Avenue E, Lampassus, Texas, Lampassus County.
Mayor and Council, second, we are either in a city conflict regarding water sewer or electric. We did sound indications to other utility, utility providers such as Atmos. Suddenly, next week, and we received no opposition as well, that this would have any conflict. We did sign out seventeen notices to adjacent property owners. Nobody received anything regarding any opposition or in favor of the request. The, the requestor has reached out to the neighbor, and they are willing to share that eight feet without any problem whatsoever. They're both in agreement with the abandonment of that alley. This was heard before the planning commission on the sixth, and did recommend approval.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Two point one, discussion of possible actions concerning the approval of minutes of the joint meeting between the city council and Lampassus Economic Development Corporation held on January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. I recommend approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay. I'm missing on the lineup. I'm not listed as attending.
We have you on it. We corrected it on the other page.
I'm not seeing it. It's not on the screen right here, and I don't have it on the hook. So what do I?
We corrected on the one that was signed up. You've counted, we've corrected.
Would've been nice to know.
It was on the side, apologies.
Two point two, discussion of possible action concerning approval of minutes of this special call meeting held on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Recommend approval. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Two point three, discussion of possible action regarding the approval of minutes of regular city council meeting held on February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Recommend approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That wasn't here.
Consent agenda, three point one, discussion of possible action regarding the purchase and charges excess of four thousand dollars from February first, two thousand twenty-five, February through February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and discussion of possible action regarding the January two thousand twenty-five investment report.
Recommend approval.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
City manager's operational report.
Mayor and Council, we're excited to announce that we have hired a director of public works, John McElroy, will be joining us from the city of Liberty Hill. He'll start on Tuesday, April first. And prior to joining the city of Liberty Hill, he was with the city of Georgetown in the Water Utility Operations Division. He retired from there after twenty-three years. Um, specializes in regulatory compliance, implementation of policies and procedures, and he's got a really strong desire to train up for succession planning. So we're excited, excited to welcome him to the city of Lampassus, and then we'll try to get him here next Monday to meet y'all. And the Second Street repaving project is complete. There will be a final walkthrough this Thursday to ensure ADA compliance. They do their final inspection on that, so if you haven't cruised down Second Street out of there, then do take that opportunity. We're having some struggles with our phone lines, specifically at the animal control facility, and Christie may be able to speak to this a little bit more, but the, the copper lines recently went down at the animal shelter, and AT&T won't come out and replace the copper lines. They're phasing them out, essentially. So right now, shelter staff is operating off of cell phones, but it kind of brings forward, as that infrastructure continues to age, it's not going to be replaced. Um, so perhaps an opportunity to transition to more current technologies with voice-over-internet protocol phone systems that allow better interoperability between city facilities, um, just a little more modern approach at a similar cost to what we're paying, um, now for our monthly service for phone lines. So I expect you guys will be seeing that in the future for some decision-making on that. And as you guys are aware, we've been having HVAC issues in this building. Have had technicians on site, both some local ones and then out of the Austin area, are the only technicians that we can find to work on our specific system based on some software that's part of that unit. It's going to cost roughly sixty-four hundred dollars to replace the intelligent touch manager, which is the brains that operates the system in here. That does not include the labor. So total repairs to this system are going to exceed just over twenty thousand dollars. Our recommendations, I guess, that lead time on HVAC unit is about twelve months. Um, the new unit wouldn't be available until the end of the year. We do intend to transition away from a smart system to a much simpler system so that local technicians are able to work on it without any problems, and it should save us money in the long run. It's just an overly complicated system that the city doesn't need. So we are looking into some pricing on some other options. But based on lead times, needing a transition freon, we may have to go ahead with these repairs, and that's what we're up for. And Becky can speak to that more. Go ahead.
Based on the inter-office memo that I provided to y'all, we have a ten-year warranty on the parts, so we'll hold out as long as we can to maintain what we have currently, but we can't upgrade anything with freon units for at least another year anyway. That'll put us at about eight years from the time it was actually installed. So we'll just kind of ride it out for that ten-year period, just in case, and then we'll go new, and we'll have some locals to help us and guide us to get the right system that's the best for the Calvert Building. But looking at what the initial cost is right now, like I showed in there, just for them to come out and do the service call was twenty-five hundred dollars. They think there may be a, a leak in the bottom and the freon, so they're gonna have to come out and do that. That's gonna cost like eight to nine thousand dollars, plus the, the, Brian, like she talked about the software. So we're looking at like twenty-five thousand dollars just for them to repair what's already existing, but we're kind of out of stance, so there's nothing we can do to change that at this point.
Why can't we put that twenty-five thousand to, toward the new system? Because it's gonna be twenty-five thousand now, it's gonna be a hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred thousand in two years. Who knows, could be more, because everything's more expensive tomorrow, right? Uh, which is horrible situation. We're just in a horrible, horrible, horrible situation with this system. I think we should take that money, put it forward to the next one, and just bite the bullet, be done with it. Go to the local company like, like City Manager said, and I understand the warranty got two years left, but it's not out there.
Right.
What, what does the warranty cover? You said it covers parts. Is there a reason inter-office memo?
Right, so the software only had a one-year warranty.
So the cost to replace is six thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, not including ladder, and that's just the software?
Correct.
The controller. It's right there on the side of the wall.
But what we were saying before is they're fixing to change frame types, so the type of machine or the unit that we have here has a certain type of frame. So for them to upgrade the freon and the machine, we're at least another year out.
And we have a leak, and we have a leak in the unit, which doesn't happen unless there's a failure in the unit, because we don't have a BB hole, we don't have cats scratching on it, and so. Should've been installed in the first house. Should've been something like that.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way that, we meet next Monday too, right, for our second meeting of council? Is there any way we can get the local guys here, a local AC guy, to really give us a better understanding of what the heck it is we're looking at?
Yes, and we, we have a fairly good understanding of what's happening with the current system. We can certainly get someone out to, uh, bid a replacement. Of course, with any expenditure of that amount, we'll need competitive sealed budgets.
Sure. It just doesn't make any sense to me, spend twenty-five thousand dollars today, and next year, in two years, when the new refrigerant comes out, spend whatever the heck that's going to be, and it just keeps up the verbal snowball going on here.
Would they be able to give us a rough estimate on what?
I think so, and I think, you know, if we can get it, someone local out here to give us a rough estimate, so we know what we're looking at going forward. We do know that we have roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars earmarked on the twenty-two CO issue for repairs and improvements to the Calvert Building, so it may just be that the basement build-out waits a little bit longer, and, and we address, address this issue more immediately.
Now, did you, did you say it was a year wait for it?
This time.
Or this time you have been on, not a change out of something, but like?
They told me half, yes.
I'm fine with opening the windows for a year.
I'm gonna remind you of that in July and August.
Seven point one, discussion and selection of website cover contest winner. I'll get a motion.
I move that we pick entry number one.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay. Seven point two, discussion of possible action to approve, deny, or approve with modifications or rezon request for Northern Creek Estates Estates, commonly known as twelve oh six Mill Street and seventeen oh five East Fourth Street as follows. Forty-nine single-family residential six SF six lots to one eighteen lots. Hundred nineteen single-family residential eight SF eight lots to sixty-five lots. Seventy-five single-family residential lots, residential ten SF ten lots to sixteen. Thirty single-family attached townhome lots to sixty-eight lots. Twenty point five one acres to agriculture green space from single-family residential ten SF ten.
Mayor and Council, this item is discussed during public hearing, and we're asking to consider a motion to approve, deny, or approve modifications of first reading of an ordinance to rezon Northern Creek Estates.
Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion. We approve this in two thousand twenty-three, correct?
Correct.
And they have basically changed stuff. Minor changes, and they are going to, if approved, engineer present to the city. So at this time, I make a motion to approve. Yeah, I get a second. Second. Did I hear a second?
Yes, sir.
You have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Nay.
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 Four threes, the motion passes.
I think is it worth noting that just because the zoning passes doesn't mean that's an approval of this development down the road?
I think we've covered it.
That is my opinion of the fact, that this is just a rezon. That's it.
Seven point three, discussion of possible actions to approve, deny, or approve with modification, request rezoned property from retail R to two-family residential duplex for property described as lot one A and two A, block eighteen, Old Town Edition, located at the corner of East First and Live Oak, Lampassus, Texas, Lampassus County.
Mayor and Council, this item is discussed during public hearing, and at this time we're asking to consider a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance to rezon property from retail R to two-family residential duplex for property described as lots one A and two A, block eighteen, Old Town Edition, located at the corner of East First Street and Live Oak, Lampassus, Texas, Lampassus County.
I move to approve the first reading of the ordinance to rezon the property from retail to two-family residential district duplex for the property described as lots one A, two A, and block eighteen of Old Town Edition, located at the corner of East First Street and Live Oak.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Seven point four, discussion of possible action to approve, deny, or approve with modification, request for specific use permit to allow for accessory dwelling in the area zone, single-family residential ten SF ten, described as lot seven, replant of lot seven and eight, block three, FJ Harris subdivision, commonly known as nine oh seven West Sixth Street, Lampassus, Texas, Lampassus County.
Mayor and Council, this item is discussed during public hearing, and at this time we're asking to consider a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance for a specific use permit to allow for accessory dwelling in the area zone, single-family residential ten, described as seven, lot seven A, block three, FJ Harris subdivision, commonly known as nine oh seven West Sixth Street.
So move. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven point five, discussion of possible action regarding a request to abandon the sixteen-foot wide alleyway north of Avenue E between the easterly and westernly sections of Lot eighty, commonly known as seven oh three West Avenue E, Lampassus, Texas, Lampassus County.
Mayor and Council, this item is discussed during public hearing, and we're asking to consider a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance to abandon the sixteen-foot wide alleyway north of Avenue E between the easterly and westernly sections of Lot eighty, commonly known as seven oh three West Avenue E, Lampassus, Texas, Lampassus County, and to direct staff to execute a quick plan D for the abandonment vacation and conveyance of said alleyway.
So move. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion of possible action regarding the kid art in the park event held in Gamble Park on April fifth, two thousand twenty-five, from ten AM to two PM.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is placed on the agenda just to approve a, a request for the kids' art in the park. the Park event to be held at Campbell Park on April fifth from ten to two.
Some move. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action regarding the project graduation class of twenty twenty nine, game night to be held on May second, twenty twenty five, from six to nine p.m. at the Five Eighty Sports Complex.
This is actually becoming a regular event at the Five Eighty Sports Complex. I think this is the third year in a row that they've hosted something out there to go towards project graduation. So this evening, we're asking to consider a motion to approve project graduation class of twenty twenty nine, game night at Five Eighty Sports Complex on May second from six to nine, and this has been approved by the Parks Board, and they do have the, um, everything ironed out with the Parks Activity Board as well for them to be able to facilitate this event.
Some moves. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and acknowledgement of twenty twenty five annual city events.
Mayor and Council, thank you. We come to you every year with our known events that we have that we repeat every year. Uh, Chuck Montgomery, our patrol lieutenant works hard on this every year with local businesses and volunteer groups and such to try to do the best we can at this point to know as much as we can. Some of these events, if you read through it, you'll notice, uh, say, to be determined, and those are later in the year where they're still developing a little bit of their plans. But, uh, as usual, no issues. Most of this we do every year. We just like to let you know what's coming up and we'll adjust as we go, and if there's something major that changes, like a, a street change, especially bigger, wider, longer, we'll certainly come back and let you know and make sure that's okay. If I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to.
Making motions to approve the list of twenty twenty five community events is presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Any more questions? All in favor?
One question. I don't see the cracking back on there. Is that included?
I, I don't think we normally have.
Okay, I was just checking.
You normally have a patrol car over, blocking traffic. Not me.
I don't believe the City of Landpasses participates in that event.
Okay.
We don't walk any streets.
I, I just want to clarify. Thank you, sir.
Discussion and possible action regarding the approval to declare a two thousand nine Chevrolet thirty five hundred work truck as a surplus fleet and allow staff to dispose of according to state law.
Mayor and Council, this truck was removed from service in twenty twenty four. Um, engine needs to be serviced and brake system needs to be redone. The truck has a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. I believe it's been replaced and fleet, so this is simply the process giving us approval to dispose of it in accordance with state law and city policy.
Some moves. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action regarding approval to declare a nineteen eighty six NAPA two hundred and forty air compressor as a surplus equipment to dispose of state law allows.
Uh, the compressor was removed from service in January twenty five. Again, just approval to dispose of it in accordance with state law and city policy.
Some move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action regarding the approval to declare two thousand four asphalt zipper milling machine as surplus equipment and allow staff to dispose as state law allows.
Uh, this sewing machine attaches to a bucket on a front end loader. The motor to the zipper is operable, however, it doesn't need a battery. It has not been used in years and years of twenty two city staff. Simply asking for your blessing to dispose of it.
Some moves. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action regarding approval to declare a two thousand Ford F two fifty work truck as a surplus fleet and allow staff to dispose of it as the state law allows.
This truck was removed from service in December of twenty four. The truck will not shift into park. It will start in neutral. Simply asking for your blessing to dispose.
Some moves. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action regarding the approval to declare a two thousand five John Deere seven 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 zero turn mower as surplus equipment, allow staff to dispose according to state law.
This mower was removed from service in twenty twenty and is inoperable. Asking for Council's blessing to dispose.
Second. Some moves. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action regarding a twenty twenty five Consumer Price Index Adjustment with a municipal fellow communication right of way access line rates.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is brought before each year, and I think this is like the twelfth year we've asked that we take no, um, action on it at all, but we don't want to raise the rates. There's no benefit to the city whatsoever, and we just wanted to consider no action or to consider a motion not to raise the right of way access line rates.
Some move. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Is that?
Do you not raise the line rate? Take no action.
Take no action.
Just clarifying.
Thank you.
Seven point one five, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of the standard professional service agreement between Ver, Bureau Veritas, Bureau Veritas North America Incorporated and the City of Landpasses.
Mayor and Council, you recall that several meetings ago, we did hear from Bureau Veritas regarding the services that they offer, and they referred to a contract that we had in place with them essentially for backup services. That contract was dated January twenty ninth, twenty thirteen. We find ourselves in a position where we are needing to update that contract with Bureau Veritas. Mike Olson is here. If you guys have any additional questions, this is a professional services agreement between the City of Landpasses and Bureau Veritas for third party inspection permitting. You name it, they can do it services.
Recommend approving the professional services agreement with Bureau Veritas.
Second. Any discussion?
I just clarification, Mike. What's the turnaround that you're seeing on like local inspect, building inspection, metro inspection, things like that?
Next day.
Next day? Okay.
But yeah, we've got four inspectors that live within fifteen miles of Landpasses, three that live inland passes. So that's not a big problem.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action regarding the first reading of ordinance amending the Landpasses Code of Ordinance Appendix A Fee Schedule, Chapter eighteen, Building and Building Regulations.
City Mayor and Council, as part of this with the fee schedule, we do need to update our building fees, inspection fees, or planning fees on our city website, and in order to do this by audit, we do have to publish, hit a publication in the newspaper, so we do have to allow that ten day window. So I'm asking that we approve the first and final reading of the ordinance to where we can move forward with this, and then I'll put it's about April first for when we can enact these seats.
Some moves. Second. Second. Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we get a motion to adjourn into executive session. The City Council, uh, the City of Landpasses will meet and flow with executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties or discipline of public officer or employee, city manager, and other personnel matters, matters as allowed by the Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion.
May I have one quick question? Yes, Mr. Mayor. Is this two minute, uh, limit that was imposed on that, is that new? I've never seen it before, and it really didn't give us any time to get into our objections.
It, it's not a new procedure. We standardly use that here in the city hall.
But they were allowed, what, ten minutes? Just, just have a question. I, I didn't feel it was fair.
Erne.